I, I mean, these guys are definitely all over it that's, it's made them forget all about Benchwalk, so.
Maybe you can't access this.
No, I do, that's how I always do it here.
Well.
You're disappointed too?
I am.
Once again, no one from the Gazette.
All right.
Okay.
Did you go?
Yep.
All right, so.
Good evening, um, welcome to the September fifteenth, twenty sixteen City Council meeting for the city of Northampton, I'm Bill Dwight, I'll be presiding tonight. We start before we convene, determine we have a quorum, with public comments section, which is where we invite the public to speak on any topic, it doesn't have to be on the agenda or subject to discussion tonight. We ask a few things of you, one, to keep your remarks under three minutes, little timer there, also respecting the decorum of the chamber by not saying any defamatory remarks about private citizens. The people arrayed here, we aren't private citizens, we're elected officials, you can say whatever you want about us, as long as it can be broadcast. The other thing we ask that you do is when you come up, to state your name and your address, and then state your, state your, make your comments. Should also know, one other caveat is that the, under condition of our rules, we don't respond. We will listen and hear what you have to say, but there's, you directing questions to us, we're not allowed to answer, and the reason for that is because this is your turn to speak, as if you stick around, you'll see that we'll do plenty of talking after that, and you'll just go, get pretty tired of us pretty quickly, so. So, with all that in place, first up, we have signed up, to speak is Shelley Berkowitz, please.
So, on the surface, I'm here, first of all, I'm at Twelfth Pilgrim Drive in Northampton for twenty-one years, I've lived in this town, and I'm here on the surface about a parking ticket, but I would not come for a twenty-five dollar parking ticket, it's more the spirit of the law and the way the interpret, the law was interpreted or inconsistently enforced that I think has issues for this town, that made me decide to come. So, the circumstances are as follows, on August twenty-fourth, I went downtown to buy an electric keyboard, and I went to Birdhouse Music on Main Street, I parked legally around the corner, it was the closest I found, I went into the store, found a lovely electric keyboard, was heavy, the person in the store said, take your car, drive it right in front of the store, and I'll load it right up for you, and, because it's very heavy. So, I did that, and I had my flashers, my blinkers on, I was not double parked, I was not parked in front of a handicap ramp, I was not parked in front of a pedestrian crossing, and I went into the store very quickly to make contact with the person who saw me right away, but by the time I went in the store and came out with the person to load up this piano, which was very heavy, there was already a parking attendant, meter maid, whatever the term is, badge number M two, who had already started to write up a ticket, I, I looked her in the eye nicely and explained the circumstances, I was there less than forty-five seconds, less than a minute from the time this began to end, and the person from the store confirmed and said, you know, she's, she's just picking, she's just unloading this piano. Despite that, she responded very officiously and, and didn't look me in the eye, she said that she could not stop the process, quote unquote, and only afterwards, when I wished her somewhat sarcastically a good dinner, that she very emphatically responded, I certainly will. So, my concern here is not for the twenty-five dollar fee, I did go through the motions, I called the parking office, spoke to David Molnar, he told me their responsibility is just for interpreting that the law's been followed, and yes, it was a zone that says no parking. There is no available loading or unloading in that store's vicinity, he said, well, I suppose they could have given you a dolly, a dolly around the corner, they couldn't leave their store unattended to do this. Now, my concern is with the arbitrary and inconsistent enforcement of this, as the store owner has told me, that they were told by the city that as a business, they could have somebody just unload very briefly, as long as the person is not leaving the car unattended, and he was outraged by this. He couldn't come tonight, but he wrote me an email saying what I've described, that we should let the city council know that we're frustrated by the ticket that was issued to you when loading in front of our store, we have been told consistently throughout the last few months by the parking attendant officers, that it's okay for people to park in front of the store to load heavy objects, et cetera, et cetera. I'm sure you can see that being told one thing and then being subject to something entirely different is frustrating to us and our customers, this came across as unnecessarily punitive and unfriendly. I hope that the overbearing nature of parking enforcement and the lack of parking availability for doing, uh, doing business in our town are issues that receive more creative solutions soon, John Aronson. To me, it was more the personal thing, that this is a small town, Northampton, you have businesses, they pay a pretty penny for rent and taxes, and there was no other logical thing to do, he has told me he's seen people in the same circumstances, and there was no ticket issued. At least it has to be enforced consistently, I did go through the motions of appealing it, it was denied, and again, I'm not poor, I would be happy to donate the twenty-five dollars to a good cause, I'm, I'm gonna pay it, but it, it's the idea that this is enforced in this very callous and unempowering way to a parking attendant to see the circumstance, and there's really no other option in that circumstance. So, that's really it, in New York City, I would have expected this, and yet the irony was, three weeks ago, I was in New York City with my daughter in the car, and something similar happened, and he just waved us and said, you should know what, what the rule is, and that was it. I didn't expect this in Northampton, so I hope you'll consider this, I'm not sure what I'm asking, other than to have this acknowledged, and you can respond how I should proceed from here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm, by the way, Jen, I'm getting notes that the sound is not broadcasting?
I know, I can't, I can't do anything about it.
Got it, okay. Lee Spector, please.
Yes, hello everybody, Lee Spector, thirty-four Columbus Avenue, and I just wanna make two quick comments on topics not on the agenda, streetlights and Wi-Fi. On the new brighter streetlights that are apparently coming, I don't actually know the details about health and safety concerns from brighter, whiter lights, but I know enough about research on perception and cognition to know that there could be some really real downsides to having much brighter and whiter streetlights, so I hope they're being taken seriously, I've seen some discussion of them, I don't know if you've discussed them here. However, I did go and look at the test lights, and I have to say that it was disturbing how bright and white they were, and I will be very sad if my quiet little street is lit up like that all night, every night. It feels to me like it's taking away the, the night, and when I went to look at them and I walked away from them, it was like this relief that, oh, it's night again, I'm outside on this quiet, small-town street, whereas before, I felt like I was in a movie set or something. I think it'll be a real loss to the community not to have the kind of night that we have now, if we're all lit up in that harsh light. Okay, on Wi-Fi, I love the new Pulaski Park, I love it so much, I can't tell you, and I was delighted that there's city Wi-Fi that you can get there. And then, I was less delighted when I realized that you can't send and receive email unless you're doing it through a web browser there, because the ports on the Wi-Fi are set in a certain way, that I haven't seen on a public Wi-Fi for maybe a decade or something like that. So, any coffee shop, you can use your mail application, everything works, there it doesn't. I had an email exchange with the head of IT for the city, who was very courteous and promptly replied to me, but the basic story was, well, we're thinking of expanding the Wi-Fi to other areas, and when we do that, we'll fix this. But, and, he wasn't really clear if that will happen or when that will happen, but right now, there's Wi-Fi in our lovely new park, but it's weirdly broken, and I've talked to some other people who are like, yeah, it's weird, they didn't know to check this works and that doesn't work. Anyway, it would be lovely if our lovely park, the Wi-Fi worked, I, I would sit out there and work, a lot of other people would, there'd be other kinds of activities, but now it's sort of halfway there, and it's, it's frustrating. That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all I have signed up, is there anyone else interested in speaking this time? You don't have to be signed up, if you feel impelled, compelled to speak, now's the time. Alrighty, I'm gonna ask the administrative assistant to call a roll, please.
Counselor Carney.
Present.
Counselor Dwight?
Here.
Counselor Klein?
Here.
Counselor LaBarge?
Present.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Here.
Counselor Shara?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, Counselor Bidwell is absent with acknowledgement, and we're on our way. So, first up, I have, I have to announce a couple of public hearings, the first one is, the second notice for the Northampton City Council will hold a public hearing here on Thursday, October sixteenth, twenty sixteen, at seven oh five PM, at the city council chambers at two twelve Main Street in Northampton, to discuss the percentages of local, of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property within the city of Northampton for FY twenty seventeen, in accordance with chapter forty, section fifty-six of the Massachusetts General Laws. And just for clarification, this is the, the tax factor is, has been often discussed, it's different than the tax rate, it's basically how we divide the tax burden among taxpayers, and by way of example, the city of Springfield and the city of Hoyoke actually have a split tax rate. They, their commercial tax rate is higher than their residential taxes. In Northampton, we have what's called a factor of one, everyone pays the same rate, and there have been discussions ongoing, off and on for years, but by and large, this is something that maybe the public has some interest in, and so, if so, please make your thoughts, share us your thoughts with, either by mail or coming into this public meeting. Also, there's a public hearing regarding an application for fuel storage, and this is pursuant to Mass General Laws, chapter one forty-eight, section thirteen, notices hereby given that the Northampton City Council will hold a public hearing regarding a fuel storage license application submitted by Cumberland Farms of one hundred Crossing Boulevard in Framingham, Mass. The land affected by the application is located at fifty-three and fifty-five Main Street in Florence, that's, the parcel ID map is seventeen C, lot one ninety-seven, and map twenty-three A, lot seventy-seven, and the application seeks to amend the existing fuel storage license to allow for A, storage of eight thousand gallons of diesel product, class two in UST container, and B, for additional eleven thousand gallons of gasoline, class one IB, I'm sorry, in UST container, for a total storage of thirty-two thousand gallons of gasoline. Public hearing will be here, held here on Thursday, October sixth, twenty sixteen, at seven thirty PM. Once again, council chambers here in the Wallace J. Polchowski Municipal Building at two twelve Main Street in Northampton, and the city council will hear all persons who wish to be heard thereon. Now, recognition and one-minute announcements by counselors, counselors, any, Counselor Shara and then Counselor Klein?
So, my first one is, you know, is that this Saturday, which is September seventeenth, from eleven to four, at Jackson Street School, they're having a carnival, it's the first annual, um, Jackson Street School PTO carnival, and it will be amazing, everybody should go, free, open to the public, everybody's welcome, I've had sneak peeks all summer of some of the games that are being made by the parents, and they are nothing short of remarkable, and there's gonna be a dunk tank, and they're looking for some volunteers to go in the dunk tank, I have some ideas, and there's food, there are raffles, it will be a spectacular event, so everyone should go, bring kids, bring grandkids, if you don't have kids, go anyway, every, it proceeds, enrichment programs at Jackson Street, they're an amazing, it's ama, all of our schools are amazing, their PTO is really like off the charts, and do fantastic stuff, and this will be like the event that you definitely don't wanna miss, so, this Saturday, eleven to four, at Jackson Street.
I can't do the dunk tank.
Really?
It's placed all the water, and then it wouldn't be fun for anyone else.
Maybe we'll make you go last.
Okay, Counsel Klein, you had something.
I have an event that does not have a dunk tank involved, but I hope I can speak to it as excitedly as Counselor Shara just has. This is a repeat, I'm reminding folks about the upcoming two public forums on the effort to resettle refugees in Northampton, we've been doing house parties, kind of quietly, we've got sixteen house parties scheduled over the next few months, but these are big public forums, and everybody is invited to come, the first one is on Monday, September nineteenth, so this coming Monday, from six-thirty to eight-thirty at the JFK Middle School Cafeteria, and the second one is an afternoon meeting, Thursday, September twenty-second, two to four PM, at the Northampton Senior Center, and this will be a meeting with folks from Catholic charities, members of the Northampton City Council, and others, it's an opportunity to talk about what the effort will entail, what it's gonna look like, how people can volunteer to resettle fifty-one refugees in the coming year in Northampton. No dunk tank.
Should be noted that people, one of the reasons that-
Counselor Klein has worked so hard to create these events, is also to give people an opportunity to express their concerns, and allow them to be addressed and, and heard at that, at those meetings as well, so. This is an effort for complete transparency and, and on a noble mission, so, and Counselor Klein and I will be there, no dunk tanks, no rotten tomatoes, but we will be speaking. Any other one-minute announcements?
Can I just note, since apparently there's no sound being transmitted by NCTV, I'm just gonna hold this up, so that the camera can see about the Jackson Street Carnival, because I'm making messages, that people can see me talking excitedly, but they have no idea what I'm talking about, so, Jackson Street Carnival.
Me too.
I don't have to say it.
That camera's on.
And, and they, I'm pretty confident that on replay, for folks who wanna watch this over and over and over again, they will-
We're back to the nineteen seventies.
Fifties.
Okay. Now, we come up to the section, was, this is a report to the Northampton City Council on action taken to satisfy committee's study requests on the local economy, and this is issued, this is a request made by the council vice president, Ryan O'Donnell, and myself, made to a very brave committee, that, that did yeoman's work, and I would defer at this point to the chair of that committee, Counselor Shara.
Um, this, I'm not really gonna report on the report, I'm just gonna say, this is, we are making the report that we submitted to the council president and vice president, available to the full council, this report is a summary or accounting of the steps we took to fulfill the committee's study request that we received on March third, the request was to study the downtowns of Florence and Northampton's economy. It outlines the meetings that we held, the, it has links to the reports we received, either voluntarily or that we requested from city departments, research conducted by ourselves with the help of an intern, Jonathan Goldman, who many of us remember from being on the youth commission and a recent NHS grad, and includes the minutes and the videos for the four forums that we conducted, which were all very, very well attended. So, this is just sort of a report outlining all of that, and just to keep you informed of our process, at our next meeting, we are going to be reviewing the, the data that we received through this whole, through all those meetings, and we'll be looking at the themes and topics that emerged during them, and we'll be deciding which of those will be more fruitful to focus on for our next few meetings, and, and which ones we wanna have a more depth, in-depth deliberation about, to see what, if any, recommendations we have to bring to the full council in the future.
And, and the report is available to the public?
It's linked to the agenda, it's also, I believe, on the, the webpage that we, is it on the webpage we created?
I can put it there until after this meeting.
Okay. So, it'll be on the webpage for the committee's study request, which is under city council on, on the city website, and on the agenda.
Thank you all, and thank you all the committee, to you, Counselor Shara, for, for presiding, and for all the committee members participating, and the public that discussed. It was a reflection of, of how vested the community is in the workings and the, and the prospects for the downtown, so. I, I, it was a big charge, we, Counselor O'Donnell and I both knew that, but the fact is, is that it was, it, it went beyond, beyond where we usually have these discussions, which is anecdotally, and this, this is data-filled, and we'll have more data, and we'll have a better sense of how, I mean, given our limitations, what, what we can and cannot do, and also, we have a better sense of what the community in the main is hoping for, for downtown, so thank you for that. Communications proclamations from the mayor? Sitting in the back on the seat, jumping up, nope, okay. We come to the resolution that's opposing the lifting of the Commonwealth, the cap on the Commonwealth charter schools, this is second reading, this, this resolution was discussed in the council, last time, this second reading would be the final reading, if it should pass, or even if it should fail, but this is to, this is the council's expression of their desire to not see the ballot question be realized, that votes that will be on the ballot, calling for the lifting of the charter school cap, the current charter school cap, and there was a divided vote, but, and, and we can have a continued discussion on this, but I'll ask for someone to put it on the floor, please.
Second.
Any further discussion? Counselor Shara?
Um, I, I wasn't here two weeks ago, so I, I missed the, the discussion here in the first vote, but I actually watched it live, there was sound, and there was video, actually, the video was upside down though, so I held my laptop upside down on my lap, but, it's okay. But, so I got to watch what I thought was a very interesting and spirited discussion that, that you all had, and I was, I was sorry to have missed it, I think it's very hard to argue with the impact that the current charters have on our district funding, it's, it's sign, it's very clear in the budget that we just spent a lot of time really going over and voting on, just, you know, right before the summer, and I think, from the discussion, it was clear that we all agree that the funding mechanism is inequitable, so, but I, I appreciated what I thought was sort of a creative approach that Counselor Murphy put forward for a longstanding problem, and, and the idea, was interested in the idea that he had, that raising the cap would somehow put a gun to the head of the state legislature and force them to pay attention, and change the formula, but it seemed to me that that plan would, certainly wouldn't have an immediate effect, it would, as charters were founded, it would sort of be a slow, continued bleeding dry of our district schools, not unlike what's happening now, but even, even more so, and so, you know, I guess the logic is that then we would, we'd eventually hit rock bottom, and then the legislature would, would be forced to care to change the, the formula. But, you know, as, as a big supporter of our public, of our schools, and the wonderful work that they do to educate our kids, and personally, as a mother of two children who have just begun their, their career in our Northampton public schools, that, that, that strikes me as a very long game gamble, that I'm not interested in taking either for my kids or for anyone else's kids, so, I, I don't really see why anyone, even, even people whose children are in the charter schools in our area now, who are happy with the education they're getting there, I don't really see what anyone would gain from raising the cap, and creating even more competition on our limited resources, so, I thank the sponsors for writing this resolution, and I'm very, I'm happy to vote for it.
Counselor Lombard?
Yes, I said what I had to say two weeks ago, and I'm not gonna go through the same thing again, and I am supporting the resolution of, of opposing and lifting the cap on the charter.
Counselor Burke?
And I'll just paraphrase my comment, not as long, but, I, I- I am concerned, because parents who want an alternative for their children, who are not wealthy enough to go to private school, have no other option, this really is their only option. I don't like the, although figuratively, it sounds interesting, putting a gun to the legislators' heads, 'cause I mean, we get a lot of things done, they're not gonna make a change if they don't have to, they've made it clear, because I think most of them endorse this, so, they're not gonna do anything unless they're forced to do something, and I think, you know, we're not gonna have to wait till we hit rock bottom, if the voters of the Commonwealth say that we're gonna have more charter schools, then they will fix the mechanism, 'cause they're not gonna let it get that far. They're very affected by several large lobbying groups, which is why they're doing what they're doing, but if the citizens say, let's make a change, they'll make a change, and for a parent who needs to make a change in their mind for their child now, that child's in school, if a change comes down the road, it's not gonna affect their child, they're probably out of the system before the change takes place. I'm very, you know, I'm very proud of our schools, I'm a product of the Northampton public schools, I have a real affinity for them, but the sys, the, the problem is larger than just here, the formula's messed up statewide, and the fact that parents who do not have great financial resources have no real other option for where they can take their children if they feel their needs are not being met, you know, in the public school, and the way the question's written, many of the new charters would have to go in places where the public schools are really not getting the job done, that's not so much Northampton, 'cause I think our public schools are doing a very good job, but there are many cities in the Commonwealth where the public schools are not really serving the needs of some of their populations, and those people, I think, really, their kids are only kids once, their kids need help today, I'm disappointed the legislature isn't being more creative about this, as I said, the, you know, the thought of a gun to their head isn't the most pleasant thing, but I think really is the only option at this point, which is, which is why, you know, I'm just gonna abstain, I understand that people feel very strongly about this, but I, I really don't wanna go along with it, 'cause I think for some parents, there really is no other option, because they don't have the resources.
Anyone else? Uh, can we have a roll call on this, please?
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
I abstain.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, that, that passes in second reading. Next up, we have a presentation, Rick Hart is here in place of Ann White, who's the director of development at ServiceNet, this is regarding Shelter Sunday, Rick, thank you for coming.
Thanks for having us. Actually, I also have Carrie Knapp here, who's for Man Amles, so it takes two of us to reply.
I recognize Carrie too, so.
But, I guess that's not on, with the microphone?
Yeah, your microphone's hot.
It is.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm Rick Hart, I live in Leeds on Leonard Street, if I need to say that, and I'm the head of the Friends of Hampshire County Homeless, which is why I'm on the Shelter Sunday Coalition, representing that. So, just to quickly run down what it is, for anyone who doesn't know, I think most of you do, it's a coalition of five community programs that benefit the hungry and homeless in the city, and the five programs are Grow Street Inn, which is the year-round homeless shelter, up to twenty women a night, maximum stay four months, and a hundred people so far this year have stayed there, then the Winter Interfaith Shelter, that is the thing that my group is involved with, and ServiceNet helps with it, which is open November first to April thirtieth, serves about two hundred people a year, more or less, who stay overnight, get a couple of meals, have showers, laundry is available to them, and caseworkers. The third group is Man Amles, which I won't talk about, 'cause Carrie will, it's a soup kitchen, the food part of our coalition, and we all do food, but they concentrate. Grace House, which is a residential treatment program for women with children who are also recovering from, the women, not the children, from addiction, who get housing and also a lot of clinical support and training, and- a lot of clinical support and training and, and rebuilding stuff. And the Single Room Occupancy Project, otherwise known as SRO Project, um, which is a, actually a project of CHD, which helps three, about 300 people at any one time, um, who are living in single rooms, uh, with help with housing stability, with food stability, and with general life skills training, networking. Um, so they represent the people that are either just getting out of homelessness or just hovering over the brink of homelessness. Um, we trade clients a lot, all these groups. They might start out at the winter shelter and go to Grove Street and end up in the SRO and be going to Man Am meals and so, um, so our common theme is, is really helping individuals gain and maintain a housed, uh, healthy state as much as possible. Um, one of the reasons we want to, uh, present this year particularly is that this is the 25th anniversary of Shelter Sunday this year. It's hard to believe it's been that long, and, um, the goal for Shelter Sunday, as always, is to increase community awareness of these issues and the solutions being offered, uh, and to gather citywide support for those solutions, and particularly the solutions that we're offering. So it is a fundraiser. Um, it's an, it's the major funding source for most of the partners, more so some than others, certainly for my group. It's, it's generally about somewhere between 25 and 30 percent of our money raised comes from just Shelter Sunday, which is important, obviously, to us. Uh, so it's pretty key. Um, public awareness is, is, we're really concerned with this year. We're always concerned with it because there's turnover and every year we get people, we go to them and they say, "Watch Shelter Sunday." You know, and you think, well, of course, if they've been living here 20 years, you'd think they would know, but a lot of them are new people. The other reason it's important this year is that we're changing the format this year and we want to let you know about that. It has traditionally been a door-to-door canvassing where we try to get every household in the city just going door-to-door, and we've increasingly been having trouble getting to all the doors. We do follow-up mailings and we do literature drops at, in, at people's doors if we can't reach them. This year, we're, we're switching and trying a citywide mailing. We're going to mail and appeal to every household in the city, uh, with one of those things that can be returned with the payment. We will still have people going to some streets as much as we can, especially key streets that usually are good neighborhoods for us. We will still be having the collection sites that many of you have seen in places like Stop &amp; Shop and Cereals and the transfer station, where people man a table and, and have cans to collect. Um, we may have other follow-ups. Our real, our real hope is that the City Council members, uh, will individually support this by spreading the word as much as possible, forwarding emails that you get, uh, if you see it on Facebook, passing it and not sharing it widely, uh, just talking it up with people so that they will know what's happening that weekend when, when they said, people suddenly get stuff in the mail and see people at their doors and see people at tables, uh, because it really is crucial. Um, I, uh, one of my favorite sayings lately is, at one of our other appearances earlier this year, another hearing, uh, one of our supporters got up and his whole statement was, he walked up and he said, "A healthy community is judged by how they treat their most vulnerable members," and he sat down. And I thought, "Wow, I've got to remember that one." So, um, I'm going to turn it over to Carrie just to say a little bit more about Man Am meals, but thank you for having us.
Can I ask, is there a way to also donate online?
There is, yeah. There's a Shelter Sunday website and you can donate through that, uh, and that will be in the publicity. It'll be on the mailing. Um, we're going to try to get some publicity downtown, uh, with flyers that, that say the website. So yes, that's a good one.
Yeah, that'll be easy to share via social media.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah. I always forget things. Okay.
Carrie, you're up.
I'm Carrie Knapp. Um, I'm a member of the Coalition for Shelter Sunday and I'm also on the Board of Man. I've been down there for about four and a half years. Um, I'm just here just a couple of minutes. Um, I'm assuming everyone knows what Man is. Um, um, we are actually experiencing our 30th anniversary this year. So we started in 1986, um, started at St. John's Episcopal Church, um, by Jim Monroe. Um, it started off in the undercroft, Sunday morning, lunch, soup, sandwiches, all done by volunteers. Basically, Man is run the same way. We have better meals and a lot of volunteers. Um, Shelter Sunday is, is vital, um, in terms of, like Rick said, a lot of our, um, a large percentage of our money comes from, um, the money we get from Shelter Sunday. So we're hoping that, um, our new mode of, um, getting people to, um, um, involved, um, will work this year. Um, also, just to let you know, uh, we, we, Man serves around and over 15,000 meals a year. Um, and we also do the Christmas and Thanksgiving meals that no one else until last year did. So, um, I think we serve, um, I think we serve the community well and I'm hoping that the City Council can, um, support us and, um, put it on your Facebook, as Rick was saying, and tweet, whatever that is. Um, and when you get your brochure in the mail, um, send a check. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I, I, uh, Rick's tagline that he's now introduced to us, I think, is actually quite apt and quite, and I like to think that, um, we as a community at least believe in our hearts. I don't know how well we manifest this through action, but I think that universally you can find that this is, this is a program well worth funding and subsidizing. So, yeah, I have no problem sharing this. I mean, I, I just hope it gets half the responses of the parking increase. Then we'll be able to fund your program for the next 20 years, so. But thank you. We can now come up to the consent agenda, and contained in the consent agenda is the approval of the minutes from September 1st, the 2016 meeting. The, also, uh, this, some referrals, appointments to Committee on City Services. Um, the Arts Council, Joe Pesci of 685 Ryan Road Florence, uh, term to run from October 2016 to June 2019. The Board of Assessors, Denny Nolan of 319 Elm Street, Northampton. This is term starting October 2016 and would expire June 2019. Margot Welch, uh, 143 Main Street, Northampton, the term to start, um, retroactively as of, uh, July 2016 and to expire in June 2019. This is a reappointment. And then the Planning Board, Euripides Del Olivera, Associate Member, uh, from Nine Washington Place in Northampton, the term to start October 2016, June 2019. Is there a motion?
To approve.
Second, okay. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I should also tell you that Jen has texted me that the sound on broadcast is working. It's just on the web, the sound is not working. So people who are streaming this will, uh, probably be, feel blessed by not being able to hear, but then the folks watching on broadcast haven't noticed any difference, so. Now we come to, uh, where we, a point in the meeting where we recess and go into the Finance Committee meeting, which is contained herein, and that is presided over by Council Murphy.
Thank you.
Take it away.
Pam, can you read the role of finance?
Counselor Carney? Counselor LaBarge?
Present.
Counselor Murphy?
Here. Very good, we're here. Um, first order would be approval of minutes from our September 1st meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, and now we have several financial orders. The mayor's in queue already, so we'll get going. The first one is 16 dot 157, an order to authorize payment of a previous year bill to Comcast in the amount of $154.83. We get ordered that the council authorizes payment of a prior fiscal year bill from fiscal year 2016 related to DPW for Comcast, uh, cable service in the amount of, or internet service in the amount of $154.83. Do we have a motion to put on the floor?
Make a motion, put it on.
Second.
Again, this is just another one of these, uh, small bills that, uh, did not come in in time for the, uh, end of the fiscal year. We want to pay it. In order to pay it, a bill from a previous fiscal year, we have to have a council order, um, so I'm asking for your approval.
Didn't you folks say the last time these came up that Comcast was mailing them to pumping stations and places where there really isn't anybody to get them?
Yeah, there was an error where the bill had been mailed.
So they just straggle in?
Yeah, so we've, um, tried to correct that, yeah.
All right. Uh, any more questions or no? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, great. Next one is 16 162. Uh, it's an order to appropriate $13,550 for the purpose of paying costs of a roof replacement schematic design and feasibility study for the Bridge Street School. Order that the City of Northampton appropriate the amount of $13,550 for the purpose of paying costs of a roofing replacement schematic di, design feasibility study for the Bridge Street Elementary School located to Parson Street, Northampton, Mass. A school serving public students in grades kindergarten through fifth grade, including in the payment is the cost of all incidental or related items heretofore, and for which the City of Northampton may be eligible for a grant under the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Set amount to be expended under the direction of the Northampton School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the City of Northampton City Council, with the approval of the mayor, will appropriate $9,032 from funds remaining in an account entitled Ryan Road Roof Membrane Project and $4,518 from funds remaining in an account entitled Leeds Roof Membrane Project. The City of Northampton acknowledges that the Massachusetts School Building Authority's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And any costs the City of Northampton incurs in excess of any grant approved and received from the MSBA shall be solely the responsibility of the City of Northampton. Do we have a motion on this one?
Make a motion.
Second, okay.
So this, this and the next two order are virtually identical, and the language contained in it is virtually identical to a previous order that you adopted for both of these roof projects. Originally, we had estimated the cost for the schematic design feasibility of $40,000. Uh, we were required to pass this order, um, and get it to MSBA, um, and we've now completed the, uh, the actual pricing and procurement of said design services, and it is coming in at an additional, uh, cost of this 13,550, and you'll see the second order, uh, same for the other project. Um, so we need to basically, um, appropriate this additional money for the feasibility study. Um, and of course, uh, we were notified of this, and of course, the deadline, uh, for getting all this stuff into MSBA is September 28th. So that's why we're coming back to you to ask you to adopt this additional, um, order, funding for the project, and, uh, and that's why we're asking for two readings. Um, again, the MSBA program, uh, will reimburse us for over 50% of the costs of these roofs, um, but we have to go through their, um, all of their process and make sure we have all of the orders in the proper language that they require.
And this sort of unusual language is their requirement?
It is their language.
Assuming nobody in your office made this?
And you'll note in the language of the, um, you know, of the, of the order itself, we're actually using money from last year's roof projects that were MSBA-funded, some, some, um, leftover funds to actually pass along to the projects.
The next school.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the mayor, from anyone on this one, or the council?
The schematic design feasibility studies are actually mandated by the process and procurement.
Yes, indeed. Yep. Any public construction process, any public construction project, um, over, you know, a certain dollar amount requires that you do a, us, a, a design, and the MSBA program specifically. Um, and so, yeah.
We, um, we've taken some hits for any, or we subsidized feasibility studies or analytical studies in the past, and it should be noted that this is mandated.
Yeah. I mean, the term, yeah. Uh, yeah. I think the study is a little bit, um, a little bit different than a consultant. This is, this is a, we're hiring an architect, basically, to, uh, design, uh, the blueprints that will then be bid out, um, on the project. So, yeah, but you're right. We do, we do, this one's definitely required, um, to, basically to come up with cost estimates and bid documents so that we know what the full project would cost, to be approved for the next phase of MSBA. You know, first they have to see, first you get on the list, you send them a letter of intent, um, and, and I think we, we, the council and the school committee had to approve an order just to do that, and then you have to do this feasibility, and then eventually we'll come forward to do the final project. Yeah. So, but again, um, it's a lot of hoops, but it's, uh, it, it beats paying for it ourselves.
Fifty percent reimbursement is good.
Exactly.
Yeah. And we've got, we've had a really good record on our last projects, right? Because we have trailings that we're able to apply to more projects.
Exactly, yeah, based on estimates, exactly, yeah. And, and part of that too is we had actually started to fund it on our own and then we got into the MSBA program. So it's, yeah, but yeah, it's, it's, uh, they've, it's worked out so far, so hopefully these two projects will also, uh, work well.
Any other questions for the mayor? If not, all in favor in finance, please say aye. All right, and this one will sound real similar. It's 16 point 163, an order to appropriate $13,214 for the purposes of paying costs of a roof replacement schematic design feasibility study for the Leeds School. Order that the City of Northampton appropriate an amount of three, $13,214 for the purpose of paying costs of a roofing replacement schematic design feasibility study for the Leeds Elementary School located at 20 Florence Street, Northampton, Massachusetts. A school serving public students in grades kindergarten through fifth grade, including the payment of all costs incidental or related heretofore, and for which the City of Northampton may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Set amount to be expended under the direction of the Northampton School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the City of Northampton, uh, City Council, with the approval of the mayor, will appropriate necessary funds from funds remaining in the account entitled Leeds Roof Membrane Project. The City of Northampton acknowledges that the, uh, MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and any costs to the City of Northampton that they incur in excess of any grant approved or received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the City of Northampton. Do we have a motion on this one?
Make a motion.
Second. Again, as advertised, just like the other one.
Exactly, in the same request for two readings.
Any, uh-
When it goes to the council.
To council. Any other questions? Yes, councilor.
Both of these take money from the Leeds, uh, account, uh, that the leftover fund is for the membrane.
Yeah, this Leeds, as well as, I think the other one took, um, some money for another project.
From Ryan Road, the Ryan Road project. So after that, um, what's the status of those accounts? Is that just?
What typically happens is when we do the capital budget every year, um, and if you go back and look at your capital budget, you'll often see that we will, um, appropriate money from unused, from, uh, from leftover funds from other projects, will ask to repurpose it. Um, so that's generally what happens. Um, usually the account, in this case, we did the, we did those roofs last year. Usually the accounts are left open for a little while in case there's any incidentals that occur, um, in the life of the project, but typically what the finance director will do is, um, either, we'll either reprogram it, um, in the, um, in the, uh, cap, next capital budget, um, you know, move money from a project that, that, that leftover money into a new project, or in other cases, um, eventually close it all out to free cash. So it'll just be closed out to free cash. It'll flow to free cash the end of the year, and then obviously we'll, we'll use it for more capital projects that will have to be, uh, re, re, um, reprogrammed, yeah.
And as I recall from capital improvements, that project was for a different portion of the roof. So we did one part of the roof.
Exactly, yeah.
Now we're doing another part of the roof at Leeds.
Exactly, yeah.
The last project wasn't to do the old-
We didn't do the entire roof.
Part of the roof, yeah.
Yeah.
And so money was left over from that project to do that part, and we're going to reprogram it to do the next part.
Exactly, yeah.
So we've been working on that roof for a while.
Yeah, Leeds has a, uh, yeah, a, a complicated roof system, yeah.
Any other questions for the mayor? If not, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I think that's the end of our agenda. If there's no new business, then a motion to adjourn.
adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Okay, so we come back out of recess and back into the regular body of the meeting, and we will revisit those finance orders, why, right now. Uh, next item up is 16 point 157. It's a financial order to authorize payment of a previous year bill to Comcast in the amount of $154.83. First reading?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Counselor Scherer?
Yes.
Counselor Carney? Counselor Dwight?
Yes. Okay, that passes in first reading. Uh, we revisited our next meeting in, on October 6th. The item that we have next is 16 point 156. It's an order to accept a gift of a crosswalk equipment, uh, from Northampton Montessori School. This is a request for two readings.
Somehow we didn't-
So we already did a first reading on this?
Yeah, we did.
Well, we didn't do, we, we think we did, but we never did a first reading on it.
We didn't do a first reading on it.
We converted it to an order, but when we went back in after finance, we never took a first reading.
Oh, that would be my fault. It's okay.
I think it's because it was under resolutions in the main body of the.
Got it, got it, got it.
And so when you went through all your orders and ordinances, it, it wasn't there because we had converted it to an order, so.
Right, I forgot about that. That's right. Thank you for covering my.
No, no, it's fine.
But I'm, I'm going to read this so that, we did read it originally, but this is, so the request is now for two reading, two readings on this, but this is a, order that the City of Northampton gratefully accepts the donation of crosswalk equipment for Bates Avenue from the Northampton Montessori School. That's in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A. And as you recall, the mayor spoke of this at the last meeting. But are there any other questions on this? And actually, I need, let's have an official motion, first reading on the floor. Okay, motion's made in second. Any questions of the mayor about this? Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Suspend Rule fourteen.
Second? Passes in first reading. There's been a request to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading in this meeting. Any discussion on the suspension of rules? All those in favor of suspending rules to allow a second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay. Motion's made in seconded to put it on the floor for the second time. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading. We have item sixteen point one six two. It's in order to appropriate thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for the purpose of paying costs of a roofing replacement schematic design feasibility study for the Bridge Street School.
Move to approve.
Motion's made in seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
That passes in first reading.
Suspend Rule fourteen.
Second? Some motions made in seconded to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading. Any discussion on the suspension of rules? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded to put it on the floor. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Passes in second reading. Item sixteen point one four nine. This is in order to authorize payment for a previous year bill for the DPW. This is a second reading. This is another Comcast bill.
Move to approve.
Motion's made in seconded. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
That passes in second reading.
Also in second reading is this item sixteen point one five oh. It's in order to appropriate seventeen thousand and forty-five dollars for stair repair at the Academy of Music.
Move to approve.
Motion's made in seconded. Any discussion further on this? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
That passes in second reading. Item sixteen point one five one, in order to appropriate forty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars for the replacement of a nineteen eighty-six six-wheeler Sander for DPW. Second reading?
Move to approve.
Second? Motion's made in seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
We're almost through it. Item sixteen point one five two, is in order to rescind borrowing authority for various projects. Second reading?
Move to approve.
Second? Motion's made in seconded. Any further discussion on this?
May we take this item and the next as a group?
You want, okay. There's a request to take item sixteen one five two and sixteen one five three as a group. Objection? I'll accept that as a motion. Actually, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So as a group, the other item is sixteen point one five three, in order to rescind borrowing authority for various projects. They're both the same, it's separate projects, however, and this is, was approved in the first reading in the meeting last, two weeks ago. Any further discussion on these two items? Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, those pass in second reading. Now we're up to ordinances. Item sixteen point one three five. This is an ordinance relative to a bus stop on Main Street, three twelve to one fourteen. This is the first reading. Comes with a positive recommendation from the Committee on Legislative Matters from September twelfth.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion's made in seconded. To put it on the floor. Does anyone want to discuss this?
Counselor O'Donnell? This start in the Transportation and Parking Commission concerns the bus stop that is right in front of the Edwards Church currently, and it amends the ordinance, well, the intent is to transfer the bus stop to the other end of the block, more towards where the crosswalk is now at Masonic Street. And I say it that way because the ordinance doesn't really reflect where the bus stop actually is currently. So the ordinance just, it will reflect the reality that we want to achieve, which is to move the bus stop to that block, to that side of the block. The reason why is primarily for safety reasons. The, a representative from the PVTA came to the Transportation Parking Commission, they've been experimenting with different locations with this bus stop for a long time, and it's their current thinking, based on what their observations have been about how it's used, that this is actually a better and safer location for the bus stop. It does cause us to lose parking spaces. Couldn't theory make them up on the other side. So.
There's currently no language that already specifies the replacement spaces.
Right. So that's what we'll have to figure out. Oh, but that's.
That's a different picture. Yeah. It's not, it doesn't look like this at all. Okay. So the image that you're looking at has nothing to do with the bus stop. Just a pretty aerial shot of downtown.
Can't hear any wire of the church.
That's just, that's just to relax you.
That's, that's coming up.
So, I mean, that's, that's the purpose behind it. Actually, you know, by way of explanation, the PVTA came to the Transportation Parking Commission with two requests. The other one concerned the parking, the bus stop on the other side of the road, parallel to Pulaski Park. The request there was that they expand that bus stop by eliminating the one sort of orphan, sad lonely orphan parking space between the bus stop and that crosswalk, the same crosswalk on the other side of the street. And actually, we voted that down because we thought there'd be visibility problems there. So two proposals came to us, one of them survived, and for both of them, our, our yardstick was whether it improves public safety, so that's the reason.
Counselor Klein?
I'm just curious, how many spots are we losing?
I think it's going to be two, if I'm not mistaken.
And will the Transportation and Parking Commission work on creating language to replace them?
I'm certainly favored doing that, yeah. If it's possible, I have to, yeah, it, to the degree we can, yeah. And that was another reason why we didn't want to eliminate the parking space on the other side of the street. You know, just very, be very cautious when we eliminate parking spaces downtown, so.
Counselor Murphy and Counselor LeBarge?
Can, can they be added where the bus stop used to be, or is that too close to the intersection of a parking space?
Yeah, that's kind of the trick of it, yeah. So that's why I don't have the answer right now, but we want the DPW to look at the situation and, yeah. Also, you know, that kind of serves as a turning lane.
Yeah.
You know, even when the bus is there, which is part of the problem, so.
But, that's true. The, the two problems presented itself, the bus would be parked essentially in the right turn lane for, for State Street, and then when the bus was taking off, it wanted to go straight, which meant it had to cut across two lanes in order.
Exactly. Yep, yep.
Counselor LeBarge, and then Counselor Klein?
Oh, no, I'm just looking at the map.
Just looking at the picture. I thought you wanted to speak. Counselor Klein?
Thank you.
I just, I seem to remember that we lost two parking spaces, I think it was on State Street, right on the other side there, so that means in the last, is that wrong?
We decreed it, it didn't happen.
They're still there.
Oh, they are still there.
It's still there.
I was going to say, in the last year, that would have been four spots in that area, and that can be a lot for people going to the academy and to the, the restaurants, right, in that area, but if those spots are still there, I'm not quite as concerned.
They're, they're there in reality, yeah. And don't worry, we're about to create another parking space when we get to the next ordinance, so.
Pictures of.
Hopefully.
I'm still looking for the spire on the church there, seems to have been.
That's, that's Old South, that's not.
I know, I know, I was.
But there is a space going.
Just joking.
So, any other questions relative to this? Okay, roll call.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading. Might, might hear from Max Bus in the intervening time, but October sixth, for the final reading of this. Item sixteen point one five eight.
Actually, could we move these as a group?